Yeah. I know it quit it from night duty.
Oh, yeah.
I every time she gets up.
You can't name.
That's not nice.
But.
Are you, are you on fraternity leave or?
Yes, I'm actually. My job started with so.
Also.
Yeah.
Sitting for.
No, we for uh.
I mean, well.
That's what I wanted to do like. Million.
I don't know.
I just don't know they they do like throw space. Commercial building. I was like, the only thing I knew is my thermostat at my house is.
Yeah. Yeah, that's what I thought they did. Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, so that's right. Here in just a few weeks. Yeah.
So you're gonna take a break through and then it's start up. Nice.
Yes. Yep.
I know I was talking with my brother because they had their son on the ten. And um have they live in Pennsylvania and they don't get return. They get a week of unpaid. But. My brother, because he had a baby, your baby was born on June ninth, right?
Uh six, a week later, sixteen.
Oh, the sixteen, my brother's was on the um ten. But he's in Pennsylvania and they don't get any time on like his wife's or his girlfriend's home, but my brother got no time. That's terrible. Yeah.
Yeah.
My baby? No. Two, six. So like and things like her mom flew up.
Brown hair.
Oh, no.
Yeah.
Zach's my son's birthday is flight day.
Yeah. Yeah.
No.
Yeah, during the. One of the birthing classes maybe or at some point during pregnancy, I saw a map and.
Yeah.
That's where six, you're right. Parental leave is like. Given by, you know, you pay into it, but where there's a state on it, it's like.
Should be feeding into that stadium, yeah.
Oh.
I cannot imagine that would have been. It's Tuesday, that would have been yesterday, that would have been. That's crazy.
I know, I know. But we have what we have here.
Yes, yeah.
Oh, that.
Well, my, I'm after this meeting, I should head to Hennawick. So I, I just got here like.
You're fine, totally safe. Please do.
You good? Shelley.
I did hear it say it's recording if that means anything.
Okay.
Show. You're gonna go, okay. Call to order our regular city council meeting for June twenty fourth, twenty twenty five. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God. And the physical liberty of all.
Thank you, welcome everyone. Uh roll call, Shelley. I'm present.
How's there here?
Council member Barak.
Present.
Council member Bebo.
Here.
Council member Nazara.
Present.
Council member Levar.
Present.
Council member Posuma.
Present. And also wondering, are we gonna have cameras in the city chambers?
So the video is not showing on here. So choose the video. Oh. Yeah. There.
There you go.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on in our agenda, item D is citizen comments. This is an opportunity for the public to comment or provide testimony to our city council. We did not receive any via our email system, but there are some folks in the crowd here. Nobody signed up, but I'm gonna offer it up to everybody if you have, if you wish to speak to our council, this is your opportunity. And also for those joining us virtually, this is an opportunity for you to come comment to our council. Going once. Going twice. Okay, thank you very much. Let's move on to our minutes from our June tenth meeting. Uh you've had an opportunity to review those. If there's no corrections, I'd accept the motion to approve those.
I left.
Second.
Thank you. Have a uh motion and a second to approve our minutes from our June tenth city council meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, thank you. Minutes are approved. Vouchers Cindy or yes Cindy?
I'll take it mayor. Uh the total vouchers are two million, four hundred, three thousand, one hundred ninety dollars and forty one cents.
Thank you.
Your honor, the finance committee reviewed these items. I would move approval.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second to approve our vouchers as presented. Uh any questions, comments? All in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose nay. Thank you. Vouchers are approved. I can see the small contracts, the fire cat for three years and then wreck tennis, which is exciting. Uh we don't have any informational items or appointments today, but we do have a handful of action items. And the first one's gonna be a public hearing. So Todd, if you could come up here. Resolution F three eighty four, this is the Cheney Transportation Improvement Plan. Uh for twenty twenty six to twenty thirty one, and I will open this public meeting.
Thank you. Um you know, it's it's year by year. It it hasn't changed much. I I I refer to the memo. Uh that was brought out um is that we we have uh several projects that are planned and and most familiar with. Uh the funding on the on the bottom end of the funding is that uh in twenty twenty six, towards the end of twenty twenty six, our residential street program. Uh does sunset, so uh any renewal of that would rejuvenate uh the six year plan. Uh nothing has really changed since the the last year. We just checked off a few of our streets. Um more and more expensive i- in the bottom of the memo that that our our revenues is not keeping up. Uh uh pretty much with the with the cost to do streets. Uh as I stated in the in the memo, uh back in, you know, nineteen ninety eight, our lineal foot cost has increased four hundred and fifty six percent. But all of our revenues uh have only uh uh adjusted uh. Just a little bit of half that of two hundred and twenty five percent. So. We are looking at different methods to possibly preserve streets uh as the asphalt and sidewalk repairs get a little bit. Uh more extensive uh to that end. And then we're also looking at um. Uh we do have a street scan and I I apologize, I was I was hoping to have that tonight. Uh they are actually out surveying our sidewalks as we speak and they'll be driving around and doing the road survey. So we will be able to come back with a full report on the conditions of our streets, uh the conditions of our sidewalks. And then also um the missing uh what we call the ADA ramps in order to prepare uh to. Uh in the future. So we'll have that report. Uh we'll have some uh metrics that we can provide for you, some cost analysis based on our maintenance uh to that end. But uh. That's pretty much all I have. I I wish it was a whiz bang exciting thing that we're doing everything here, but. We're kind of winding down, keeping a little bit of reserves into uh what we have going this year and next year. Uh we do have a a the big projects going on now, Elm Street from uh Washington to North Six. Uh we're in design phase. We've got thirty percent design phase on Elm Street from uh North Six to Second Street. Uh hopefully we'll have the design of the roundabout coming in this fall. And then we are on the recommended list from an application that we did uh earlier this year with SRTC. Of funding a sound name street from Presley almost down to Washington Street. Uh with that, but it was short on funding. We received, they're recommending just a little over seven hundred thousand, which leaves us about five hundred thousand dollars short. Hopefully we can do a TIB grant, which is a state, we could match that uh to make up that difference. But if we don't get the grant, we do have uh some monies in our preservation dollars to to carry that that project forward. So. With that, I would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Todd. Any questions from council on our transportation improvement plan?
Yeah, real quick. Um when we're improving or we're making um. Like improvements to these streets and sidewalks, are we looking at um pedestrian and cyclists like zones and the health and state of those areas? I know you mentioned the ADA ramps, but sidewalks themselves.
Yeah, the sidewalks themselves uh uh to that and every any opportunity we get to uh take a look at bike lanes. So you'll see uh something different on Elm between Washington and and uh. Uh North Six as we work with STA and and modify the bike lanes and make those apparent. Uh mostly on our arterial streets, our bike lanes are are showing up. Um anything that we can, but typically on a preservation project, we're just replacing and we're not doing a lot of new sidewalks. Uh we do uh uh I did receive a comment that we need to to focus on uh Cedar Street and and that one we did overlay a little while ago. But for some reason, it is um pretty much not adhering to the existing pavement and it is in real poor shape. So we may have to get into that and repair that, which is not not on this plan, but that could be just a repair that we go forward with. Uh we may come back and and modify uh uh do an amendment if for some reason we do get like a safe routes to school grant. Where we are are talking about right now widening Cedar Street. If you walk, look up Cedar Street, it it it's wide at the at some of the approaches. But there is really just an embankment there. It's never been. So it really narrows down right at the intersection in our sixth Cedar. So we are taking a look at that. Uh attention. But yeah, to answer your question, anytime we get an opportunity to maybe uh cut in a bike path or define a bike path where we have extra room. Yeah, we we will certainly take a look at that on the departures.
Thank you.
Other question? Mark or Vince? Any questions for Todd?
I've got a quick one, Todd.
Please.
Yeah, I was just wondering if this transportation plan is thinking forward about um. The intersection that will most likely get fairly congested with the new apartments going in um behind the dental office?
Yeah, I mean, we're uh uh so the um there was some comments behind the dental office of how that how that traffic would flow. We haven't seen uh the the design or the development just yet. Uh but once we get those numbers, obviously we'll be working with a developer on that. We did have some uh preliminary conversation with them. Um they understand that uh they would like to build the road improvements out to Cheney Spokane Road, but our our ordinance really wouldn't allow. Because it it's not their property, it doesn't extend to that, but they do see the need to somewhat pare off that uh that traffic. Uh another comment was, do we make uh make provisions where we have maybe just a right only? Uh in in maybe out to nine oh four, uh you know, making that less less dangerous. So all of this will probably come together as we get the road design uh kind of put together with that development. And then kind of see what we can do. And that will be an effort uh uh with the Washington State Department of Transportation. They may have a say uh at the intersection of of uh you know, pretty much Anderson Road and nine oh four. But uh with the intersection of Cheney Spokane and nine oh four, obviously that is a lighted intersection. So just not knowing how that's gonna flow uh just yet, uh we'll we'll definitely take a look at it. And I know there was mentioned, uh what about pedestrian crossing uh in in that area? And then we would be probably focused on Anderson nine oh four and seeing what we could do if those uh crossing was to increase in that area. If that answers your question.
Thanks, Mark. Uh this is a public hearing, so I do want to open it up to the public if they wish to comment on our transportation improvement plan for twenty twenty six to twenty thirty one. Uh anybody online wishes to comment on our Cheney Transportation Improvement Plan? We will all see this again in the future at a subsequent meetings as well. Oh, I'm sorry, Steve. Yes, Mr. Forbes.
Sir. I thought I heard you say that. It's a four, roughly four hundred. Eighty bucks a year foot versus revenue coming in about half that. And I love that you asked bypass, but it seems as though we're gonna go back to dirt roads. I mean, that that's an extraordinary gap. That's a hundred percent gap. And of course, we just say. What's add to the to the tax taxes, which I got yesterday, which eight hundred dollars more for county. Along. Maybe the next day come. I'll do this. So. This is a paradox that is. Very common. Just wanna make that call.
I'm I'm done.
It is, uh it it is, Steve, it it is, uh you know, without that funding prior to nineteen ninety eight, we really didn't have a solution. Um uh the funding that we did have put us in fairly good shape with our residential streets or or basically what we call our local access. We've been successful in our arterial streets. So when I mention arterials, those are all grants. Uh uh grant funded for preservation, which the federal side uh pretty much finances about eighty six and a half percent. And we have to match the thirteen and a half. And then the TIB, which is a state grant, Transportation Improvement Board, they match ninety percent, we match ten. So uh full focus on the arterial streets, we can we can kind of maintain it, but without that, those preservation dollars. Um yeah, that that would be, that would be rough. Now, when we talk about different things that we can do. Uh once we get the the street rating and and tie in the metrics, we could do, uh we can do what we call scrub seals. We can do uh uh maybe an overlay uh a chip seal. We don't know just extend. It's not gonna pu- extend the full life of a twenty or thirty year. Uh full out pavement or overlay, but there are other methods that we can do. We may get aggressive on cracks, you know, just to try to preserve it. But yeah, that is true. It is very difficult right now and the prices are very high uh based on that that four percent that we get on electrical and natural gas.
Yes, sir.
Uh my name's Kevin, I'm seven three three tail drive over in Harvest Club. Can you say a little bit more about how the survey is done? And then also, I'm just curious about how much is preventative versus um new or whatever? Um cuz like I I can, I can think about cracks that I see in our streets. And if the cracks don't get filled and fixed before too long, then that's gonna be, it's gonna get more and more expensive to fix the road, so.
Yeah, we've we've done uh uh pretty much, we've gone out and tried to do a a number of crack seals in in using that money. Prior to it, to an overlay, that that's an option uh to that end. All of the funding is is pretty much iteration through. Uh new development, when new development comes in, uh the developer does put in the streets and sidewalks and they basically convey it uh to the city for uh maintenance. So yeah, as we look, Harvest Palace is fairly new and yeah, cracks will tend to show up. Uh the rating that we're gonna get, that will provide uh solutions. We will know how much uh crack seal and that we should be doing on roads that are going to uh be more problematic and fail sooner. And then there'll be good shape roads to where maybe a a small crack seal will. Put the program in place, we'll be able to provide that data, we'll be able to provide some uh current cost estimates of what we can do, what we can and can't do. Within possibly a budget restriction. And and then uh move from there. So hopefully we can bring back this uh once we receive that report and show. Different elements of what we can do with the restricted uh funds that we do have on an interface.
Todd, for the benefit of the people who are um. Haven't been in uh previous meetings lately, could you explain the survey that's being done and how it's done?
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, that's why I would. Yeah. Will I use the mic? Okay, I don't want to turn my back to you.
I can't hear you.
They can't. Oh, okay. Um the survey is basically, uh it is a, it's a a a for better words, a a Google Earth car. Um and what it does is it drives all of the streets. It's GPS, so it knows exact location. It lays down basically a laser type um, you know, blade. And when they drive, it's picking up all the cracks, it's picking up all the roads, all the ravelling and everything else, and then they can rate it. Uh the sidewalk is more intense. They will probably be driving those and and taking a look at at uh pretty much all the cracks. And then when they're in town, also, they will also inventory all the all the ADA ramps. So it it's pretty much done with vehicles. Yep.
This survey is all being done, it's gonna generate electronic work showing you.
Yep, part of the, part of the, part of the package is a is a maintenance software where we can, we can drop a a lot of scenarios. We'll know what streets are in real good shape and what streets have almost are coming to fail. And you know, the whole, the whole idea is to um, you know, catch those streets that are about ready to fail. Because if we have to dig them up, remove everything and excavate, you know, the subgrade, that becomes more expensive. So the whole idea is to preserve those as first and then try to take a look at some uh uh overlays on on them, kind of the mid range. And and a straight, uh streets rated from zero to one hundred. And that falloff point is about a rating thirty where you really want to pay attention to it.
And and we do that about every ten years?
Yep. The new technology is is very new that we're we're hopefully excited about that. So when you see these cars running around and they'll have a little camera up top, that's what they're doing is they're taking the survey and and.
What's the cost?
Uh the cost over five years, oh gosh, you're gonna challenge me on this. I think the the first initial cost is about eighty three thousand for uh those so- street sidewalk surveys. And then what we do is we pay for the the maintenance software where we can do the reports and and everything else and then update as we're improving the roads. We can put that into the system.
Thank you, Todd.
Anybody else? How about anybody online? Go ahead.
Um so how much does Eastern contribute towards the um repair and preservation of our streets, especially in those areas that are adjacent to campus?
Sure. So so really, uh if you if you think about it, Eastern uh uh pays electrical and natural gas. So uh at at the original estimate back in nineteen ninety eight, um. Uh we were receiving uh probably about twenty five percent of the revenues. And I don't know if that has been consistent. I haven't really seen the report, but they are one of the bigger electrical and natural gas uh generators.
Actually, they count, they.
They 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 have done some wheeling uh of some there and I don't know and I don't, I think I could get with Cindy to kind of give you a report on on how that revenue would.
Yeah, I'm just curious how it breaks down like the average residential taxpayer.
So you think, yeah, you think about if you had a.
Percentage wise, yeah, ratio.
Yeah, so the the four percent, so when you take a look at the four percent, if you add up, if you had natural gas and electrical. Uh electricity and and if 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 both of those combined to a hundred dollars, you'd be paying four dollars on your electrical bill per month for that, for that residential service. So.
I just wanted, because Eastern generates a lot more traffic than like I do.
Yeah, so.
Bike lanes would help reduce that.
Yeah, they they do, they do.
Clear and tear.
They do uh contribute quite a bit on that, on that text.
Thank you.
Anybody else wish to comment on our transportation improvement plan? Again, this will be brought before you all again in the future for final passage, but. Want to give people an opportunity to to provide comments on our plan. Uh I see, is that Kit? I can't.
Yes, this is him. Can you hear me?
Uh we can hear you.
Great, um I'm wondering if that uh survey um includes uh lighting and curb coloring.
Um the the survey can include a lot, um because if you think of of Google Earth and you have a street view, it has that capacity. Um we've only asked for uh uh during the study is to just identify the streets and the sidewalks. Uh but if we were to put attention to it, uh we could identify uh street signs, street lights and and everything else. But we do have a fairly good inventory through our our local GPS. And if we can kind of match that with with what we have, uh yeah, it it does get a a basically a a full camera review. And identifies all those objects on a GPS uh location.
Thank you.
Thanks. Anybody else? Anybody else in the crowd? Okay, hearing none. I will go, does council have any other comments or questions? Hearing not all, go ahead and close this public hearing on resolution F three eighty four, our transportation improvement plan. Uh next one, resolution F three eighty two, on call asphalt repair services contract award, Todd.
Resolution approved for the. Resolution three eighty four.
It's not further down?
Nope, I'm sorry, I apologize. It is.
Oh, I'm sorry. Um yeah. You mean to to approve resolution F three eighty four?
So move.
Back in.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second to approve resolution F three eighty four. Uh and we will move on to resolution F three eighty two. Todd, this is on call asphalt repair services contract award. There's a couple of these today.
Yeah, they have.
Shoot, did I do?
I'm good to call for that, though.
We didn't call for a vote, I'm sorry. So we did have a motion and a second to approve resolution F three eighty four. All in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose nay. Thank you, Todd. Resolution F three eighty four passes. It's been a long day. Okay, now we're gonna move on to resolution F three eighty two, asphalt repair services. Go ahead, Todd.
Yeah, so we went out for what we call a re- request for qualifications, really not a bid uh uh to that. We we wanted to get qualifications uh from asphalt companies that do actually repairs. Uh with this agreement, um uh we did receive uh uh two responses, one from the Diamond Asphalt, one from Shamrock Paving. And what this will do is this will allow us to do the maintenance a little quicker when we go out and we do a water repair. We don't leave the street open or sidewalks laying there. Uh this is a maintenance contract where we can go right to them and get a a bid. And then uh basically what we call is a job order and then we can contract uh whatever the whatever those costs are or the timeline coming in. So it just kind of sets a process where we can uh uh pretty much uh repair those fairly soon. And that's uh we did the same with the with the concrete.
Thanks, Todd. Any questions for Todd on this? Repairser, asphalt repair service. Yeah, check.
Um is there a reason we're looking at two different companies as opposed to like?
No, uh uh who, you know, really whoever really submits and qualifies, we're we would, we would sign everybody up. You know, it's one of those things where we just need to uh be able to move on this fairly fast. And and sometimes if we just get uh uh only one contract or we have to go back to council, because depending on the on the size of it. Or if we if we do several small contracts for asphalt repairs, it looks like we're not, we're not addressing all of them. Because uh we we try to repair them as we go along. So we uh like last year, I think we did well over fifteen repairs in the water and trying to get those patched. Uh in a timely fashion, instead of waiting to the end and get one big bid, it allows us to get those things uh kind of patched up and sealed.
And so this is a time saver as opposed to like a money saver thing?
Any other questions for Todd on this? No? Okay, what's your pleasure?
Make a motion to approve uh resolution F three eighty two.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second to approve resolution F three eighty two, on call asphalt repair services contract award. All in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose nay. Thank you, Todd. Resolution F three eighty two passes.
Mayor. Mayor, could I ask a quick question?
Yes, go ahead, Mark.
Uh Todd, I just had a quick question about how how does this one differ, the one we just approved? How does it differ from F three eighty seven, which is on call, concrete repair services contract award? Or was um? I guess I'm a little bit. Understanding, is diamond and shamrock just doing paving? And the one below is for concrete, is that correct?
It is correct. Yeah, we didn't want to put all of the, all of those together. We want to keep it separate on asphalt and concrete, so uh it it's nice and clean.
Okay, thanks, Todd.
Okay, resolution F three eighty three, this is the aquatic centers change order for, you're still up, Todd.
I'm still up. Uh actually, we went from five to four, but we were uh uh pretty much getting all the somewhat of the final change orders. We do have a a few more uh pending as we remove, uh we've moved closer to the uh opening of the pool. But uh with you tonight, you see the series of change orders and uh that change orders, those changes amounted about a hundred and twenty one thousand, two hundred and ninety four dollars. Um total project, uh we we are right around between four and five percent of the actual change orders, which uh is is fairly impressive. The majority of that of those change orders was unsuitable soil. This is just something that we could not control. And uh that was just a large dollar amount. All the other ones were just um, you know, stuff that uh we we either uh did not have a a clear definition. Or we didn't have it in the in the uh uh bid as well, were the drawings. Uh and then we just had to kind of figure out. How to change order it out. So I'd be happy to talk about any one of these. If I, if I can, I'll probably have to ask uh Dan Curly on there to kind of justify it, but I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Todd. Any question, go ahead.
Yeah, I just had a quick question. Um so the total contract sum, the twelve million, two eighty, um. Is that the total cost minus what we contributed from like REIT and the parks?
So so uh when we first started, it was the contractor's total cost uh uh to that end. But uh there again, we do have the architectural and the construction portion of it and then a lot of the uh geotech work. So when the project is done, I think that uh to be fair, I'll bring back the the total project cost for everybody to kind of take a look at all that breakdown. And what we did have, uh one of the, oh well, two of the change orders that we went through was the alternative bids where we we decided to put the ninja. Uh crossing and all that, that those are 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 inc- incorporated in there. The new playground was the was the last time uh that we went. But uh with the unsuitable soil. But uh, with the unsuitable soils, yeah, we were going to have a little bit more cost on the geotech to try to bring that up uh, to that end. But we can give you a, a full breakdown on that as we get closer.
Thank you.
Todd, can you just remind us what the initial budget was for this project?
The initial budget was the bond amount was thirteen million and I believe, and Cindy can correct me, that we did put in another um, yeah, I'll let Cindy go. We had two funds, one from the REIT and then one from um, one from the uh, park mitigation. So I won't put Cindy on the spot.
No, you're good. Um, we, the city contributed one point six million dollars to the pool on top of the thirteen million that the bonds were sold.
Okay, so we're still well within that, still a little bit of wiggle room in case there's another change order six.
Yeah, every time we dig, it, it gets really scary.
Anybody else? Questions for Todd?
Yeah, I have some questions for Todd.
Go ahead, Mark.
Thanks, Todd. Uh, my first question is, are these items that the city is asking for or items that Walker is asking for?
It's basically uh, what happens if they unearth something or do something, uh, or they will uh, say that this was uh, not you know, well uh, thought out or is it maybe is missing and uh, on a plan? Then we ask for them for uh, kind of the proposal. So uh, you know, basically uh, some of these, the storm uh, sump system, uh, that was the old uh, well that was in there. We didn't really have a good idea of the quantity of groundwater that was coming in. We did some tests. Uh, so we knew that we're going to have to update that pump system to be reliable. And after that, that was one that we, we asked for uh, to a new pump system in that, in that existing wet well that was on the existing pool. So it does not have that potential to have groundwater come up and into, into the pool. That was kind of an example that, that we have. Obviously, the lap pool safety cover, we talked about that, that wasn't really in there. We felt that there was a need to have safety covers in, especially during the uh, off-season. Uh, you know, to that end, if anybody was to climb over that fence and, and if we do keep that pool uh, pretty much somewhat full during the, the winter time, uh, that was kind of one of those things that we, we wanted to uh, kind of get uh, with, with the cover. Uh, with the cover, we have to have uh, the tie-downs in there. So in order to make a decision on a cover, that lays out the patterns for the hooks that go into the concrete before they pour the concrete. So that gives you kind of an example of how we uh, address some of these things as we move forward.
So are, are they mostly things that we're asking for as a city or things that Walker is asking for?
Uh, pretty much the city is asking for. To that end, if we, if we're talking unsuitable soil, um, yeah, we, we have the, the contract, figure out how they're going to uh, you know, replace that soil. But some of these things, uh, ADA chairs, we had one, uh, uh, we decided to kind of go with the portable chairs because the, the fixed chairs uh, would be probably uh, a little bit problematic depending on where we put them to people coming in and out. So we made the decision to uh, get the, the portable uh, ADA chair lifts and we, we got two of them for each pool. For that, for that operation. Uh, interior CML, the sealer, that was something that, that uh, uh, was just presented for the, for the, for the life of the sealer of the blocks uh, to that end. So those are the things that um, we look at and it is proposed.
I think uh, the, the challenge I have, although I see that these things are important for the pool and and we probably need to do them, it goes back to the last one that they presented to us, which was why weren't these things in the original bid? Like, like, these are regular things that you know you are going to need during this project. You know you're going to need ADA chairs, you know you're going to need a sump pump, you know you're going to need these things and they're not in the original bid. As a principle, this is the challenge I have. It seems like we're getting change ordered to death here by them. And I've had uh, four local contractors, all independent of one another, come up to me in the past six months and their comment kind of snarkily was, how many change orders have you had so far by Walker? And the point that they, and I asked the question, the follow-up question, what, what are you asking that for? Cause this is what they do. They low bid you and they don't include all the things that should normally be in a bid so that you give them the bid and then they change order you to death. And so uh, as a principle, I, I, I struggle with this. Like who's building a public pool and doesn't have ADA chairs in their original bid or a sump pump? That's ridiculous. Who doesn't have concrete blankets in the winter? Have they never done a concrete job in the Northwest? I mean, these are the things that, that it's like, this is the way that they come back and get us for more, for more money. And so that's why I'm asking, is the city asking for this or is Walker asking for this? Cause these are things that I think we should put back onto them. Because they should, they should pay for these. That we, we hired them to do a job and they should pay for them because they should have put them in the job to begin with. And because they don't, this is their little way of getting, getting us to add more money to it. I struggle, I'm struggling with that over and over again. And, and so while I know we need these things and we're probably going to need to, to, to include them, in the future, I think as a city council, when we have projects and they bid on the project, we need to think about how this has gone with the pool and whether or not we want to choose them. Even if they have the lowest bid, they, we may say, we, we've gone through, we've gone down that road before. And so that, that's the challenge I'm having here. Um, while I see, see these things are necessary, um, I, I think they should have been in the original bid. And if we'd have looked at other bids from other companies, they might have had all this in there. And so they would have gotten the job. And so that's my challenge.
Thanks, Mark. Anybody else? No.
Your honor.
Yes.
There are no more questions. I would move for passage of resolution F three eighty-three.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second to approve resolution F three eight-three, uh, order for, or change order for for the aquatic center. Any final comments? Appreciate the discussion. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Thank you, Todd. Resolution F three eighty-three passes. Jenkins, resolution F three eighty-five, the safer ground. That's a mission.
Well, good evening, council. Uh, mayor, if you all would permit me fifteen, twenty seconds, I didn't realize we were going to have our three newest firefighters who are graduating waiting this week here and attend to sign. If I could just do a quick introduction if you.
Absolutely.
Gentlemen, feel, feel free to stand up. Yeah, stand up. So the far back right here is uh, Christian Kit Foster, who was a career firefighter for several years, a volunteer firefighter for the city of Cheney as well. And when we went through and did our hiring process about four months ago, uh, Kit surfaced to the top. So uh, honored and proud to have Kit on board. Uh, to the, to the right here in the front is Matt Dalton, recent graduate of University of Idaho. Correct? And was a volunteer firefighter down there with their department as well. Uh, he put in for the process and obviously rose to the top. Um, he is born and raised in Washington State over in the Everett, Everett area, is that correct, Matt? Okay, so he's trying to look to get a little bit back into Washington State. It's going to be a great fit. And I know you've heard the name, not sure if you recognize a face, but the infamous Nate Lawton, uh, professor Nate Lawton, who helped Jeff Anderson for three years in a row, teach the EMT course as a professor up at Eastern. Uh, honored to have Nate Lawton on board as well. So they're graduating this Thursday at Mead High School at two o'clock. If you would like to attend their graduation.
Thanks, Steve.
All right, up for your consideration and Shelley, this computer's locker, you have an unlock it for me so I can screen share or if you can bring it up. I just have one document that I wanted to bring up. The safer grant, but for your consideration tonight, uh, council is simply for me to be able to submit. It's this computer here that's locked. It's asking. Shelley. Yeah, up for your consideration tonight would be uh, for me to just simply submit for a safer grant. Um, I know uh, council member Overhouse will probably remembers this from a few years back when we submitted for this grant a long time ago. But the federal government comes out with two ma- major grants for the fire service, ones for staffing and the other ones for equipment. So this one's for staffing. It, it's probably more likely than not, truth be told, that we're not going to receive the grant. Most grant writers have a ten to a thirty percent success rate because there's a lot of departments have put in for these grants. Uh, however, it does give us about three to four months in the event we are fortunate to receive the grant. Then if you would like, we can have the hard conversation if we can even afford it. Uh, I don't feel like we're out anything, just simply submitting for the grant other than the six thousand dollars that we, we paid to hire a grant writer who I felt did an amazing job. Um, not that your council packets are getting any smaller, but I did include an eleven-page grant writer from the grant writer who I felt did a, a really good job. But it's about a ninety-five percent draft product that I had to submit for you all for tonight, had to get it in last Wednesday. And some of those things have since changed. Um, we were initially going to go out and ask for the grant writer for two to three new positions. And the grant writer was very transparent, um, a former, you know, fire, career firefighter. Uh, I've been a grant writer for years. He said, your probability of success for this grant is zero based on what you're asking for. What it comes down to is how well are you or how close to you with being in compliance with the NFPA federal standard? So that's why he came back to us and said, you need to be asking for, for four, four to five more career firefighters to put you in compliance. So with that, I don't know if I can screen share this up. Uh, deputy chief Jeff Anderson has been working feverishly hard. I don't know if I can. Oh, okay. I can't, can or can't carry. I can't. Ow, I'm sorry. We're a hot mess up here. So Jeff is working super hard on putting what we call a capabilities risk assessment together. Um, hopefully it's a tangible way for you all and for the citizens to understand what, what are we capable of doing as a fire department? Uh, the city and the citizens and, and us as the employees have done extremely well for the last hundred years, trying to manage the fireside with very little. Uh, the demographics has shifted here in Cheney. Uh, we are per capita have the highest poverty rate in Spokane County, the city of Cheney. And also per capita, we have the highest amount of psychiatric calls per Spokane County here in Cheney. Um, so with that, um, you know, just your strong consideration for me to be able to put in for this grant, I did put a better cost uh, update on uh, before you tonight. And I'm happy to share that with you. Uh, council member Bartel and I'll assume as well email that to you, a copy since I wasn't able to get that before you tonight. It's that Excel document, Shelley. I don't know if you. Click the little green share button down here. I'm not sure if that'll buy you the. Okay, maybe we will pivot to a later date. That's quite all right. Yeah, I had to send a request. You have to allow it, I think.
You were, chief, you were just gonna, you were just gonna share this, right?
No, sir. I had the capabilities risk assessment that I was going to bring up. Here it is. And if you, if you would permit me, I'd like for deputy chief Anderson, who worked really hard on this to, just to give you a brief overview of what this is about.
Uh, good evening, uh, public safety committee. This is slimmed down. Just so you know, uh, this is a much more complicated document than it looks. Basically, you're going to see four colors up here. Green is based on that NFPA standard. That's the optimum best recommended best practice for the industry. Red is basically meeting state law. So that's where do we fall in terms of these pieces? Black is not meeting state law. And so what we did is we looked at what is our current staffing and where are we able to be at for our first incident, second incident, third incident? While we've actually been here at council tonight, we had two simultaneous medical calls. So if you look, you'll see we were able to meet the medical level for the first call. Luckily, they were wrapping that up and they were able to quickly get to that second call. But a lot of times those come out nearly simultaneous. What this does is essentially if we edit and look at the grant itself, what we're going to see is if we hired five additional firefighters, that would put five on shift at a time with Kelly days, vacation days, sick leave, most of the time that means we're going to be at four people. Some reason that one's not on. So what that does is you can see it automatically updates. That means we would be at recommended best practice for the majority of the medical calls for not only our first, but our second incidents, that would allow us to split into two units. And then it would allow us to meet state law for structure fire, which I know chiefs talked about for a long time. We don't currently meet two and two out and we're in violation of that law. So this would get us into compliance. And the whole goal of a safer grant is just to give us a bump to help us get, get to that next level. And so uh, this is streamlined down. We actually have the ability to go through every call type we have and look at where we're at. But what it really comes back to is as a council, we've been given a budget for a number of years and said, do the best we can. But that really doesn't help us educate you all onto what does that mean? What does it mean to hire a couple firefighters? So that was the goal here was to really try to show what is the tangible impact for these different things, for a structure fire, for a car accident, what is that going to do? So hopefully that, that hits what you were looking for.
Not sure if you have any questions here. And I know that's a little hard to read in the room here, but it's the key legend down here and as Jeff implicated, black just simply means we don't provide a level of service at all. EMS is, is really what we do well. Uh, the fireside is the tipping point, especially for the grant writer for this grant. Um, you know, and, and Washington state law says the same thing, shall have four firefighters to enter a burning structure fire. Uh, so the, that's the whole reason why the grant writer suggested that we really need to put in for five, which would put us, you know, at five people on duty on a good day, it does change that a little bit. Um, but as Jeff indicated, probably ninety percent of the time, we're going to be at four duty, four on duty because someone's on vacation, someone's sick. Uh, someone's on a Kelly day or, or the vaca- uh, weekend day off. Um, I could manipulate that down to three. Yeah, cause I, I can stand up here all day long and bark and bark, but at the end of the day, for me, it even, just putting it into a chart allows me to tangibly see uh, the tangible effects of what that does to the ecosystem with staffing. So I, I know that's something that Jeff's been working really hard on, very proud of the product and I wanted just to highlight him tonight, so. I think I've spoken enough. Entertain any questions or concerns you have.
Thanks, chief. Any questions for chief?
Oh, you can go first. That's okay. I don't really have a question so much as I just wanted to state that we've talked about this a lot in public safety. Um, the risk balance and employee balance of fire, having fire, enough firefighters um, on staff. And so um, I am in full support of going after the safer grant and seeing what it provides us if we get it. Um, but I think this is going to be a big discussion we need to have um, at a retreat or whenever we, we need.
Um, can I just piggyback and go off of that? We have talked about this at length for well over a year now at this point, what our staffing levels are at. And one of the things we need to take into consideration is what is the liability to the city? By not meeting these minimum standards, by not meeting these federal or state um, mandated standards, uh, which calls we're willing to sacrifice when we're being doubled up. So um, can you give me briefly, if, if you have that number off the top of your head, what percentage of these calls are medical? Cause I know most of what you guys do is EMS.
We're, we're right around seventy-four percent historically is medical. That's been another paradigm shift in the fire industry over the last thirty years. Uh, if you go back thirty to forty years ago, firefighters went on fires. Um, you know, the, the, the nature of people calling in nine-one-one nowadays and for the reasons that they're calling nine-one-one, I, I don't fully understand. Most fire chiefs across the nation don't fully understand that you're calling nine-one-one for that. But you know, and, and I think the police department does it extremely well. They have the ability to categorize their calls. You know, if, if, if someone's not in immediate danger, okay, you're going to go into the queue and as soon as we can get to you, that's great. The fire service has not been able to pioneer a path to do that. You call nine-one-one, the clock starts ticking and we have to respond as quick as we can, even if it's, you know, you smash your finger in a corridor. So yeah, seventy-four percent of what we do is EMS. Which is low for the West Plains. The West Plains on average is about eighty percent for medical calls.
Um, you had also mentioned that some of these calls are mental health related. Is there any way we could potentially tap into some of the um, CRT grant funding to help offset?
I think there's some great ideas for that, for sure. Um, you know, you all, it was a different, I mean, councilwoman Overhouse remembers it, but the CARES program, city of Spokane started it up with our Eastern students and um, that, that has really helped to offset some of those calls. So we're constantly doing CARES referrals to trained clinicians, social workers to come out to our citizens that. You know, that that have needs. But there's, there's a small variety of programs that I think we could probably take a look at. For sure with the opioid funds.
Yeah, exactly. I mean, yeah, just whatever grant money we can tap into to help offset some of these costs down the road would be fantastic. Another thing that I'd like to kind of mention or highlight is we need to be taking this into consideration when we're looking at our comprehensive plan. And where we're looking for future building and how that may impact your guys' ability to respond in a timely fashion to some of these. So I just want to make sure that we're all kind of thinking about this as we move forward with the comprehensive plan as well. Where we want to put our people, where we want to put our funds, how, what do we want to prioritize, especially in this next budget season? Thank you.
Councilmember Posthumah.
Thanks, Mayor. Just to both chiefs, I just want to say thank you so much for communicating well with us as a city council. That's really great. And you guys have done a lot of great work and I think that's important. Could you also share with us with the rest of the council, because we've talked about it a lot in public safety? If we were awarded the grant, could you talk through the percentages? That we would receive for the grant and then how many years down the road? We would be, we would have to pick up the bill for for the entire amount of that person's salary. So could you just, so that the council can start to be thinking about that and processing that? About how that financially would work for us as a city?
Sure, that that was the handout, Councilmember Posthumah, that I put out before everybody tonight except for you and. And Councilmember Bartels, and I'll email that to you as well. So safer is generally funded for three years and unfortunately, the last six, seven, eight years, it's been funded at a hundred percent. We didn't think the safer grant and the AFG grant was even going to go through this year. It was delayed for about two months at the federal level. When it came out, safer is only going to be funded for the first year at seventy-five percent. That means the cost share for the city would be twenty-five percent. Year two, it's at seventy-five percent safer funded, twenty-five percent for the city. And then year three, it drops down to thirty-five percent federally funded and sixty-five percent that the city has to cost share. And then by year four of twenty twenty-nine, we would have to assume the full salary for those firefighters, move it into perpetuity. But the value, working through finance and. Is right around one point one million dollars is what we could potentially get from the federal grant if we are awarded. Those positions.
So without this grant, we still need to have this many firefighters to meet those minimum standards. So we're offsetting the cost upfront to save ourselves potentially on the backend from any potential litigation that may occur by. Dropping one of these calls or having a lower level of service, correct?
Correct.
So have we talked about finance, about any of this, like where we're going to get this six hundred and sixty thousand dollars?
No, ma'am, I'm asking you all to.
I'm not sure which department we're going to fire people from to be able to get that money. There's really no. There's really no money for. Yeah, so.
So let's say we have to fire a couple people from finance or where's, you know, light or whatever. The liability or the risk to our citizens is not nearly as great as if we don't meet these minimum standards.
I think I would say that every city employee and every department comes with a certain level of risk. If you do not have. People in the light department that you, because you mentioned light. And. We have, they, there's certainly. Electricity, I think, brings with it a certain level of risk and I think the department head could talk to you about that and. With finance, if we don't meet our requirements, there are costs that we can be sued for doing things wrong there. There's the entire city, every department brings with it, it's a certain amount of risk. And so, you know, we'll have to bring, you know, anyway. Every department brings with it a certain amount of risk that we can be sued for. So it it. And it's, and every department brings with it a cer- a certain amount of life safety risk, you know. Like using the example of the electrical department. I I appreciate that Steve came to council tonight. I didn't pay him to mention the fact that. Taxes are a burden for a lot of people in our community and. But I'm glad he did because that's what we're talking about here and. So anyway, it's just. The money doesn't exist currently in our our system. And we've talked about this, the fire department and finance before, also for a number of years, actually, we've. Talked about what better arrangements or. Relationships we might be able to have with District Three. We've talked about. How we might, well, we've talked about a number of things and. So. It's, it's, it's complicated. I think it's complicated and we probably do need to have a much more. Prolonged discussion of before we. Anyway.
Before our budget season, we do plan, we've talked about it for a while, we do plan on having that retreat so we can.
Yeah, and I don't want to get out ahead of my skis here, Mayor, but one of the things that I was potentially hopeful for is that we haven't negotiated our Eastern contract since two thousand and seventeen. And the data's lending to about fifty percent of our call volume and then arguably the value of the facilities up there. It's probably nowhere near compensable to what the city is funding the fire department versus potentially what Eastern. You know, and I truly believe that every one of us employees for the city of Cheney probably wears at least one and a half hats. I think the mayor's getting a good taste of that in the last six weeks, but yeah, so we're all overwhelmed, we're all busy.
Yes, it's very thin.
We're all value added in our own way, but didn't want to cause any sort of controversy there because I, it's an important topic. And as your chief, I just feel compelled to eliminate you what the standards are. And if it's a no, then that's, that's okay too, but at least give me the opportunity to say, hey, these are the standards. Tried really hard with a volunteer program. Unfortunately, they stick around for about twenty-one months, some maybe longer than they get a career job with us, but. You know, it's not a Cheney problem, it's a nationwide issue with volunteer firefighters of today and. Trying to get as creative as I can.
Thank you. Good discussion. Anybody else? Questions for Chief Jenkins? Seeing none, what's your pleasure?
If there are no other questions, I would move for approval of Resolution F three eighty-five.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion to second to approve Resolution F three eighty-five submitting the safer grant. Final questions, comments? All in favor, say aye. Posnay? As have it. Thank you, chief. Resolution F three eighty-five passes. Cindy, joining us virtually, Resolution F three eighty-six, this is the public record redaction software, kind of renewing our already in place. Software.
It is, thank you, Mayor. So when, you know, when body cameras came on and all this and public records and the public records laws. The redaction of all that's become very complex. And so this was initially purchased. Basically for all that police department stuff, but when Kathy Munoz then was moved into the public records for all of the city. This, this software was purchased at that time, so it covers not only Shelley and her public records that she works on for everybody but police. But it also provides that same software to our police specialists for the public record requests that they do. It's a one-year agreement. It's been about the same price every single year. The reason you're seeing it is because, well, it's over ten thousand dollars. That's why, even though it's a renewal. Anything over ten thousand dollars hits you for approval. So we are asking for approval of Resolution F three eighty-six, please.
Thank you, Cindy. Any questions for Cindy on renewing this contract? Just a much needed piece of software. Okay, what's your pleasure?
If there are no questions, I would move for approval of F three eighty-six.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution F three eighty-six, the renewal of our public records redaction software. All in favor, say aye. Posnay, thank you. Resolution F three eighty-six passes. Todd, you're back up. Resolution F three eighty-seven, on-call concrete repair.
It's, it's the same as the asphalt. We did the, we did the RFQ at the same time, one for concrete and one for asphalt. And that just gives us the ability to to go in and repair the sidewalks because typically sometimes when we're doing the water repairs. We're getting the sidewalks as well. Happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Todd. Any questions for Todd on this service contract award? Seeing none, what's your pleasure?
Senator, if there are no more questions, I would move for passage of Resolution F three eighty-seven.
Second.
Thank you. A motion and a second to approve Resolution F three eighty-seven, the on-call concrete repair services contract award. All in favor, say aye. Thank you, Todd. Resolution F three eighty-seven passes. We do have one ordinance, Todd, and I think this is just for the first read, correct?
Yes, that is correct. This is just for the first read.
Yep, ordinance Y eighty-nine, this is amending title twenty-one dot twenty dot zero five. Development standards, go ahead.
Yeah, and I apologize, I'm looking at the at the standard, I don't see the basically the cross out, but. As we slide through. The ordinance right here, what we have done is we've sat down with Hayden Homes. And we took a look at the development standards. Our development standards are fairly old. It was back in, I think in two thousand and fourteen, when some of those were brought forward. What we did notice when they, when Hayden brought their home designs in. Is that we did have a table that set the garage two foot back from the, from the front facade. We know that that's not what's happening. It's usually either level with the facade or comes out a little bit, or in some cases it comes out quite a bit. So we sat down, we took a look at the ordinance and we kind of adjusted the. Basically, the design standards to allow garages to maybe come out a little farther. It also said that the garages can't be over fifty percent of the of the front facade. So we have that kind of redefine what the facade is. And then also, if the garage comes out more than, I think, fourteen feet. That we would want to have either a gable or an architectural feature. So that is put into play that we would have an architectural feature to make sure it looks like a house and not all garage and very little house. The, the second, the third thing we're recommending is that the third car garage, we didn't have really anything in there. But if they would propose a third car garage, that we would allow them up to sixty-five percent of the front facade, just to put that garage in the side. So what I'm recommending tonight is just a first reading. Of just the design standards and we just removed that that first restriction to it. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Todd. Any questions for Todd on just the first read of ordinance Y eighty-nine? Go ahead, Councilmember Bertels.
Thank you, Your Honor. We discussed this at Public Works. I think the general consensus was kind of opening up. The, this ordinance allowing for more flexibility for a lot of these newer homes. I think some of the, as Todd mentioned about the facade, having the garage set back is. Is maybe a little bit older school, a lot of the newer homes are even even or a little ahead. So again, this is something I always, I support. And I, I'm not, not trying to speak for Paul and Mark, but it was kind of the general consensus to, to. Open it up, if you will. Thank you.
Thanks, Vince. Any other comments, questions for Todd? And again, we're only looking for the first reading so we can receive comments.
Your Honor, if there are no more questions, I would read for the first reading of ordinance Y eighty-nine in title and summary form only. And that subsequent readings be brought to us at subsequent meetings.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second for the first reading of ordinance Y eighty-nine, amending title twenty-one development standards. Entitled in summary form only, and that future readings be deferred to subsequent council meetings. All in favor, say aye. Posnay?
Ordinance Y eighty-nine, an ordinance amending title twenty-one entitled zoning. Of the Cheney municipal code and providing for other matters related thereto.
Thank you, Shelley. We will address this at our next council meeting. Thanks, Todd. Don't think we have any staff reports unless, Todd, you want to give a quick update on the pool? I know that's forefront of everybody's mind at this.
Yeah, no, we're, we're moving right along on the pool. Last, I believe it was last Wednesday, we did kind of have this formal gathering to kind of take a little bit of a tour of what was out there. I can tell you from last Wednesday to today, there's just like night and day, the landscape contractors are going full bore out there. We're addressing all the, kind of like the punch list items in the building. And then the recreation pool, where we should see water going in that by the end of the week, as we told from Walker. And when that goes in, we'll be looking at temporary occupancy so we can get staff in there for training. So I'm hopeful that we will be seeing the pool open within the next couple of weeks. And hopefully, it's probably sooner than that, but from what I've been told, staff has been training. Lifeguard staff has been training, we've been training some of the management staff. And it will probably take a day or two to get in there and actually get our computers turned on, get everything all ready to go and then start to train. So it should only take maybe a day or two and then we'll start talking about maybe a soft opening and a real hard date on the grand.
Thanks, Todd. From our part, I want to thank the city for all their support and department heads for everything you guys do and your teams have been amazing. And I appreciate that, really. And. Another thank you to the many donors that stepped up to help to donate and sponsor some of the equipment at our pool. So we have some great local businesses step up the light and provide some nice sponsorships. Council reports, Teresa.
Nothing, thank you.
Hey, Vince.
Good evening, attending AWC conference this week. Next council meeting, I'll provide a quick overview of some of the sessions I attend. And look forward to seeing you all in a few weeks. Thanks.
Thanks, Vince. Jackie.
I attended the opioid abatement council last week. I've been working with court, fire and PD to identify some critical needs that we can address with that opioid funding. We have quite a bit that we need to spend. The other thing is I would like to open it up to the public. If there's anybody, any of our constituents that have ideas, what they would like to see us use these funds for. I am all ears. This is meant to go back to the community and help the community. As this should be a community-based response, so any ideas that people have as to what they would like to see these funds used towards, we're happy to entertain that. And just make sure that we're capturing all that information and that we're also maybe considering some of these things when we're looking at. The comprehensive plan as well, like a lot of this stuff gets tied back in to our long-term vision for the city.
Nothing for you, Mayor, thank you.
Okay, well, thank you all for being here. This is the end of our agenda, so I'm going to conclude this meeting. Well, Paul wasn't here to stop me. Thank you all, appreciate it.